We have in front of us an amendment, and that's information from Ms. Lister. So I think one of the issues that we talked about when we took this up on the floor and some detail was the concerns that some people had with referring back to the title, to the definition of incapacitated adult entitled thirty-four and this seems to, again, move us away from that definition. We're back, or is that definition still, would that definition still be?
I defer to Ms. Bellis or Mr. Albert to speak to that, but I'm not sure if...
Yeah, actually, maybe it would make sense for either or both Ms. Bellis and Mr. Albert to come up and present this amendment.
Yes, we could, maybe both at the same time?
So I think that the handout from Ms. Lister was designed to help, help people be comfortable with incapacitated adults. So this actually doesn't attempt to create a new definition of incapacitated adult. The existing definition would continue. But what it does, because the department had been concerned, and if I mischaracterize this, Ken, you can come up and state otherwise, was concerned about exploitation. And so what this does is require that the legal guardian or person with power of attorney for healthcare for that incapacitated adult be designated as the patient's primary caregiver. The presumption being that creates an assurance that the person who's legally responsible under existing law for the incapacitated adult has to actively agree to that cultivation. It allows the incapacitated adult, who may be a great gardener, to continue to cultivate their own, this is for their own use, it's not, this legislation does, the amendment does not allow an incapacitated adult to become a caregiver, it's somewhat just their own medicine. But it does create that assurance that the legal guardian has signed off. The department also requested that for someone for whom the state is the guardian or public conservator, that the state not be required to be the primary caregiver for that patient. So that creates that, that's the piece in red, shall designate a second primary caregiver to assist the incapacitated adult, who is a qualifying patient. And that should also, this refers back to qualifying patient, this is an incapacitated adult who has a legal recommendation from a doctor because they have a medical condition where their doctor has recommended medical marijuana. So we wanted to keep it as simple as possible rather than creating a new definition, but avoid the exploitation. And we appreciate the department's willingness to work with advocates on the language.
Representative Burstein?
Thank you, Senator. Does this mean, does that person who would be growing, do they, do they register and get card and become the caregiver?
I have suddenly turned your mic off if you could.
So the, the, so the incapacitated adult themselves, patients under main law don't have to register, so the incapacitated adult would not have to register as a caregiver. But the, but the legal guardian or power of attorney would have to be a designated caregiver. But I don't believe they'd have to register if they were a family member.
There's a law, isn't there?
Because the law doesn't require registration if they're a family member. So they wouldn't have to register, but they would have to be a caregiver, there'd have to be a caregiver relationship.
If they're a family member, they don't, like, if they were power of attorney or something like that.
That was not a non-family member, then under the existing law, they would have to register as a caregiver with the state.
Okay, thank you.
Senator Haskell.
The use of the word "shall" in the next to the last line seems to mean that the public guardian may not cultivate, but shall, which I read as must, designate as a second primary caregiver. Not all.
This is the department's suggestion, so I would, I would cede my time to Mr. Albert about that piece. I think what, as I read that, it states that the state of Maine, if they are a public guardian or public conservator, shall designate a second primary caregiver. I, I think that's where the department would have the flexibility to design how that happens. And presumably that's to safeguard, and one of the challenges is incapacitated adults in Maine often are low-income patients, some of the people who can't afford to purchase, especially if they're, if they're, they may not be able to work. So to be able to cultivate their own medicine may be particularly important for that population.
And is, but does this create the assumption that every incapacitated, we've got to get down to a really small group of people, incapacitated patient?
It is a small group of people.
Incapacitated patient under the medical marijuana law must have a second primary caregiver to help with cultivation?
So, most incapacitated, well, I actually don't know the numbers, so I actually can't assert that, but a significant portion of incapacitated adults probably have family members who are legal guardians or have powers of attorney. But there is a small portion of incapacitated adults for whom the state is a public guardian or public conservator. So that's, that, that last line in the legislation applies just to that small subgroup.
What if they don't want to cultivate?
Oh, they don't have to, this is, I mean, I think...
Can it say "may"?
Oh, I would think so, absolutely. Nothing in this legislation was intended to require an incapacitated person to cultivate. In fact, we wanted the opposite of that. But there are incapacitated people...
That's what I read, "shall."
Yes, people who are, yes.
First Representative Sanderson, then Representative Tina.
Thank you. I understand where the senator is going here, however, when you read the sentence, it says, "A public guardian or public conservator as specified by Section 518 MSRA 5S 601 may not cultivate marijuana for the adult qualifying patient, but shall designate a second primary caregiver to assist." And so this is if, this is if they do want to cultivate, they can certainly designate a caregiver.
And it's in subsection B, which is what defines what a qualifying patient may do, which is cultivation, that's right, Representative Sanderson, thank you. So a qualifying patient in this subsection of law may, A, possess, and then B, cultivate. There had been an exclusion, excluding incapacitated adults in 2012, and so this language is designed to, to permit them to cultivate under subsection B.
Representative Tina.
Yeah, again, I'm, maybe I'm, so I'm reading this last sentence as saying that a public guardian has to designate a primary caregiver to assist an incapacitated adult Not a "may." So what if, what if a guardian decides that they don't want that person to be using medical marijuana at all, even if you're a qualified patient? Or what if they think that that person shouldn't be cultivating, that they should be acquiring their marijuana, like, directly or through a dispensary?
So you're suggesting that we change, basically that the public guardian or public conservator, you're saying what if the state believes that that person should not be cultivated?
The person who's, the person who's assigned by APS to be that person's guardian has the rights, well, has the obligations, you know, and the powers that a guardian has. And this seems to be pretty specifically directing them, you know...
So changing that word "shall" to "may," is there, is there comfort? We are comfortable with changing that last "shall" to "may" to make it permissive rather than obligatory, is the department comfortable with that?
Because it's "may not," and so it should be...
May, doesn't mean.
May, doesn't mean.
Representative Sanderson.
At this time, I'm trying to look up the statute because I believe this follows, falls under the section that says an incapacitated person may not cultivate for themselves. It's not in the same section or the same line that says they cannot designate a caregiver. So this section applies only to the cultivation piece. That's what I'm trying to look up real quickly here, and not doing very well at it.
Representative Tina.
I think the prohibition against, against the incapacitated person cultivating is in rule, not in statute, is that, is that correct, or is it in statute?
It's in rule.
It's in rule?
It's not in statute.
So you have to look in the statute and undo prohibition?
Yeah, that's right.
Are there any missing ends while we're at it?
So this would need to stay.
If you made that two sentences, you would use "may" in both of those sentences. If you made that last sentence two sentences, which says a public guardian conservator may not cultivate for the adult qualifying patient, that makes sense, right?
But may designate.
And then, if you did second sentence, which says a public guardian or public conservator may designate a second primary caregiver to assist. But when you say "shall," that just means that every person in that position has got to go find a, a second primary person to help them cultivate whether they want it to or not.
We're very comfortable with "may." Is the department comfortable with "may"? Yes, I think that may have been an oversight.
All right. Any discussion, or is there, is there a motion on the, for us? Senator Haskell.
I would move on to pass as amended.
With "shall" being "may"?
"We shall" being "may."
All right. Seconded by Representative Sanderson, moved by Senator Haskell, odds pass as amended, LD 752. Any discussion on the motion? Representative Heinsohn.
Thank you, I might have missed this. Do we know about how many people this is the number? Three, four? Something like that?
We know at least one.
At least one.
At least one. So it's not just hypothetical.
All right, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Seeing no additional discussion, then without objection, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion to pass as amended, please raise your hand. That looks to be, Representative Heinsohn, was your hand up?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that's a, that's unanimous. Upvocents number present.
On roll.
Now we, now we get to the, all right, well, now we get to everything else. I guess, do we want to start with the department bill, or do we want to start with the other pieces? I guess we kind of, there was just, there was desire to kind of look at all of these in the context of each other. So we can, so let's talk about all of them. But in particular, well, here, let me... So we have LD five, LD seven twenty-six, LD twelve fifty-eight, LD thirteen ninety-two. I'm passing out to the committee right now, this does not, a proposal which does not affect the department bill, but affects the other pieces, and we can certainly talk about the department bill in the context of all of this as well. This is a proposal, I'm more than happy to, here are other thoughts, and, but this is one way we might proceed. Basically, the thinking behind this is taking three of these bills, splitting up some of the different proposals into, that we've heard, into three separate vehicles. And the two, so the first bill I have here, which is the Sanderson bill, which is, what is it, twelve, twelve fifty-eight, Saviole bill, which is seven twenty-six. The thinking is some of the pieces that I expect will be easier to get passed and may not be subject to a governor's veto, we put in, in, in the Saviole bill. Some of the other pieces we might want to move forward on as a committee, we put in the Sanderson bill. And then we got a third bill I'm happy to talk about.
Is this changed?
I'm not sure what this is.
My name's on the end.
All right. It's there somewhere. So in the, in the first, yes, Representative Sanderson?
I think it's important that before we talk about any of these bills that have anything to do with caregivers, there are bills in another committee put forward by individuals, I'm not sure whose sponsors are with legalization, who seek to cap caregivers at one thousand. We already have almost two thousand caregivers, so that would put a thousand businesses out of business. I don't think we can move forward on these in honest and open manner without having that completely known.
I think that can be voted?
That does not have been voted yet.
I know they were working on that today, did we?
I don't know. I think that's part of my concern about what's been going, I have to say, we're in a work session right now, so I have to go on just a little bit of a diatribe here. I've worked very hard on these medical marijuana issues for both the benefit of dispensaries and caregivers for four years now, and I'm quite distressed to see the us versus them that's happening here. And what's interesting is, I don't find out till today that there's actually movement in the legalization bill to cap caregivers at a thousand. Quite honestly, that makes me not inclined to support any bill regarding marijuana that we have going on in this entire legislative process this year, with the exception of the department bill, which we've worked very hard on to find some agreement on. There is room for both caregivers and dispensaries in this state. They offer different services to different people. And different people go to each one for very different reasons. And I'm, I am incredibly distressed that it's come to this, and I just have to have that out there. I am incredibly distressed that we have one side of this, of this industry battling against the other side, when so far till now, until the legalization debate has come into, we have all been able to, if we'd always agree on everything, really work well together. And I just wanted to have that out on the table.
Appreciate that. I'm, I'm being informed by text message currently that Representative, LD fourteen oh one, Representative Dianne's bill was, on, on the pass in committee today, I think that's probably the bill, nothing question, that's, I don't know if that was unanimous or if that was, anyway, but since it's been brought up, I, I would very much like to move forward on, on working on these issues. So there were two, I'm being informed by text messages, there were two bills in the criminal justice committee, one sponsored by Representative Dianne, one sponsored by Representative Russell. I understand that being, right, I guess there are a lot of people listening in right now. My phone is, is going off. Representative Russell's bill...
I'm glad they're here, my dear.
My understanding is Representative Russell's bill is, thirteen oh eight, is, is still moving forward, and that has no cap on caregivers. But the bill that does have a cap on caregivers, my understanding is that that was killed in committee today, so.
All right.
All right, so are we, are we, that being the case, are we comfortable working on these issues? I mean, we're gonna have to work on them at some point. Representative Tina.
Let me back up my, my friend from Chelsea, because I do. The answer to your question is, I'm happy to, again, like I said last Friday, I'll sit here all night so we can figure out what we need to do with these bills. I think that she just articulated something that I tried to articulate last Friday, which, you know, this committee has worked extremely hard over the years. She's been on this committee longer than I have, we've worked really hard to try to get to a good place as a group on these things. Legalization looming, I think, is going to have a impact on that. But I don't think that means we should, you know, not work all these bills that we've already continued, you know, that we've already put a lot of time into. We may end up unanimous, we may kill a bunch of them, we may be split in any number of different ways, but I think, I think legalization casts a very, very long shadow on this, on this conversation, at least it does for me.
Representative Sanderson.
Thank you, Representative Tina. It does for me too, because until we see the final disposition or vote on any bill up in the other building, I am not sure that, okay, perhaps Representative Dianne's bill was voted ought not to pass, but, you know, as someone who has worked with the individuals on both sides of this entry for, industry for five years now, and knowing that the process, sometimes we often vote bills ought not to pass with the intent of rolling the content of one into another, until we know the final disposition and language of a bill that's being worked in another committee with caps, I will still continue to be a little, shall we say, reserved on where I want to go with some of these, with the exception of the department bill, which if we want to work that right now, I think we can work.
I, I, you know, I'd like to move forward on these bills, and if, if their individuals want to just leave everything the same, I guess they can, they can vote against the report, but I'd like to move, I, I think there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of work done on a lot of these things, I think that we have made a lot of progress on some of these things. Personally, I would hope that proposals around legalization, which are in the criminal justice committee, I would hope that items that particularly impact the medical marijuana program, I would hope that the criminal justice committee would know that that's something that is in our purview, is the committee health and human services, and I would, just like, just like when something comes to us that isn't a purview of another committee, we, we consult with them or we send it over, you know. So I, I don't want to let, that something else is going on in another committee stop us from making progress on some of the issues here in front of us. So, all right, so this is, here's the proposal, here's the proposal that I, that I've got here. The thinking is trying to take some of the, splitting things up into a couple of different bills, some of the different ideas we've heard, both items that have been proposed in the bills that we've had, but also items that have been brought up in public hearings and recessions and all of that. The thinking is, first, I'll start with bill number two, and this is, the reason for splitting them up into two bills is, or multiple bills, two, the first two bills trying to have a bill that has got some of the proposals with the broadest agreement on, that expect to be able to get through the legislature easily enough and, and wouldn't trigger a governor's veto, putting that in the second bill. In the second bill, we have that it would allow primary caregiver to employ a contract with up to two persons to assist with the duties required of that primary caregiver. The Department of Health and Human Services is required to adopt rules regarding the licensing of these assistants. Now, this was, this was a proposal in one of the bills. Personally, I don't, my personal preference would be to have no cap on, I don't think we should have a cap on employees, but this would, this would raise, raise that cap, so it's in the right direction. We've got creating a state tax category for primary caregivers, clarifying the law in relation to primary caregivers paying sales tax like dispensaries do, requiring the DHHS to adopt routine technical rules governing the manner in which the department considered an application for and a renewal of a registry identification card for a primary caregiver, and establishes, and establishing that dispensary, which it, a dispensary provided that a hundred percent of its ownership and all the, and a hundred percent of the members of the board are residents of the state of Maine, paid upon request, qualifies as a individual profit. That would be that bill. The, the other bill which has, yes, Senator Haskell.
Thank you. Before we go to bill by bill here, it, it appears that these are simply sponsors, and that much of this is not particularly relevant to what that sponsor was looking to do or propose to do. And I'm having a little bit of trouble just saying, because these are pieces of paper, I want to move proposals around, I'd like to be sure that there's some germane properties of what we're doing to the intent of the sponsor or the bill, because that's really, I mean, otherwise, we would just say the committee's gonna write its own bill and pick out the pieces, and I'm not, I'm not real fan, and I haven't, I haven't put the two side by side centering here, I would have expressed this to you earlier, but I just have a little concern that if there are pieces here that are relevant to what Representative Saviole, Senator Saviole proposed, I'm glad to include them in his bill, and I guess I looked at Representative Russell's bill because it was the first one, and what you proposed as a potential amendment to her bill is not at all consistent with, I think, what she was proposing, so...
Well, and I will say, Representative Russell's bill, and we have Representative Russell here, I haven't spoken to her about it, Representative Russell's bill, I, if, I'd been thinking, thinking from step one about this, Representative Russell had a previous bill in, which was simply a concept draft that was given to us for permission to do anything with if we wanted to do other things related to the medical marijuana program. But we killed that bill because we thought we didn't need it. This, this bill, LD five, is duplicative of what is in Representative Sanderson's proposal, so, so, it's very beautiful, it's a, so, Senator Haskell.
And I think my, my point is if you change the intent and the title of the bill, and you're not, then you're just using pieces of paper as opposed to considering bills that are being proposed by legislators. So I'm having a little bit of...
Well, with Bill one, Bill two, all of these proposals, say for item nine, which is something that came out just in public hearings on several of these items, all of these items in Bill one, Bill two, came from, originated in either one of these bills. In some cases, they were, they were rearranged a little bit. And in some cases, the proposals were duplicative, I mean, both, both bills had proposals around increasing...
If I could just see the, and if I could see the connections in here, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In looking at this list, is this... In, in looking at this list, does this mean that you have, does this mean you're suggesting that you take out of the bill that I personally sponsored, LD 1258, the number 5, 6, and 7? Delete that from my bill and put that in Senator Saviano's bill?
Well, one thing to keep in mind is that both of these bills had some items that were, that could have in some way, so, we're talking 5, 6, and 7. If, if that's something the committee doesn't want to do, that's fine. I, I'm simply, and I, I, I did bring this proposal forward, for people to review beforehand, I'm simply bringing forward one structured way we can proceed on this because it has been quite an ordeal to try to approach this in a structured way. So I'm simply bringing forward one way we can proceed on that. If other people have better ideas, I'm more than happy to take your, Representative Gutierrez.
Thank you, Senator. Kimberly, thank you. I believe when you first started presenting this information, you, you talked about the distinction between what's called under draft Bill Number 1, which is Representative Sanderson's bill, Bill Number 2, the Senator Saviano's bill, the distinction between, you know, which ones might survive, you know, the governor's ultimate review of this, if it gets, if it gets through both bodies. And it's, which, which is the one that you're concerned about?
So truthfully, I mean, at, at one point, so the items in, in Number 1, so, in, in item, in, in Bill Number 1, we are raising the patient cap. We are, and along with that, we are putting in the additional inspection requirements, also eliminating the, the limit on caregivers and dispensaries to be able to, to sell and transfer between each other. Particularly, particularly the patient cap was, has been a very controversial piece. At one point, we were, and truthfully, the, the impetus to separate into two bills specifically came when we were, when the insistence was on eliminating the patient cap altogether. I mean, at this point, the proposal is to, to raise the patient, into the patient cap. If the committee wanted to move forward on one, if the committee wanted to move forward on one bill, the, the simple thing that I would like to see is that anything that is a poison pill, that we can fight for as a committee, and we can try to get passed, and we could get passed, I don't want that to, to mean that any other reforms we're interested in doing are, are then completely sidetracked because of it. Representative Hammond?
Thank you. With regards to Bill Number 1 and the trade-off that you mentioned, the, the raising the cap from 5 to 15 in exchange for the onsite assessments.
So to be, just, just for clarity, so it would actually add 15 additional qualifying patients, so it actually raises it to 20?
For a total of 20. And for me, I don't know if there's enough value in, in raising it by 15 to 20 for, for added the additional, the additional onsite assessments. I, I might support it if we remove the cap altogether, because I think that's really in the patient's best interest to be able to serve patients that are, only need a small amount. And at any given time, I, as we've discussed in the past, I, I think there are, I think there are more effective ways that we could structure the licenses. To be able to serve somebody who only needs a small amount every few months, to be able to serve those patients, as it is with five, if you're limited to five patients, you can only take on a patient who uses a higher quantity. I think that needs to be worked out. I don't know if just simply raising it to 20 gets us there. I'd only be interested in voting for, for a bill that was structured by removing the cap, removing the nation cap. And then, of course, I think the onsite assessments, the 25, I noticed, would be reasonable.
Representative Sanderson?
Thank you. Discussions right today and other times with Mr. Albert from the department regarding the LD 1392, which is not on this list, 3 is the remaining bill left over. We've come to some real, we, we had some real good discussions regarding what the department needs, what the department wants, where they want to take this program, where they're willing to go, and what they're willing to do. Putting that into context with the other bills, especially when in regards to the bill which I sponsored, which is Bill Number 1 on the list, LD 1258, you know, I think if we can maybe back up here, I would suggest that we go through the department bill, and in that context, then maybe address these three bills as one, or three separate, in order to, because one thing that Mr. Albert indicated is, they really, in their bill, are looking for a compliance and investigation piece. Right now, my bill calls for inspections. With the compliance and investigation piece, they really don't need inspections. We can cross inspections out of that bill.
So are you, are you proposing, so if we're just looking at, if you're looking at this, you see you would cross out?
I think what we, I think what we need to do.